For the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, three point O is to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make motion of community agenda.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, agenda is approved. Alright, four point O our acknowledgements and recognitions, we don't have anything on the docket for that this evening. So we'll move to five point O or recognition of visitors and community comments. So, welcome visitors to our meeting here for the June twenty twenty five. School Board Business Meeting. Our community comment section is an opportunity for the public to address the school board on an item included in this agenda in accordance with guidelines printed at the end of the agenda. We now. No one signed up?
Nope.
Okay. Six point O our report, six point one is the principal report.
No report.
No report, Mr. Bongi is not here this evening. So we'll move to six point two, which is, and we also are, don't have our student school board member report this month either. She's out of town. So we'll move to six point two, which is our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of things, I love Josh to not be here, he didn't have anything to report really with the end of the year other than. Everything went well with the end of your ceremonies for graduation and. All of those logistics and he's been focused on handbooks and year end kind of paperwork clean cleanup. And will probably now be out of the office for the whole month of July, which is what he's supposed to do, so hopefully we'll keep him out of here as much as we can. For the next several weeks. In my report, you can find a couple of updates, one is a conversation I had with, just this morning actually, with the. I guess coaches, you would call them, of the youth mountain biking club that has started here over the last couple of years. It's gained traction, they're getting close to their capacity of sixteen riders. The association itself has a, like a coached rider limit for the different age groups, this is not a school district activity, it's a kind of a club activity. But they approached me about. About considering or possibly bringing forward to the school district an idea of. Of turning some of our school forest trails into mountain biking trails for beginners. Because all of the other trails in Cook County are, there's a ton of elevation and they get into that intermediate and expert level. And so there's a lack of space for them to help, like elementary program, find a space to do that. So I listened to it and I just wanted to let you know early on, I listened to it, I thought, well, that's not a decision I make in isolation, so that may come back to. The board at some point later in the summer or early fall to be pondering, I did tell them and disclose that we submitted an LCC MR grant that that include, would include some funding, funding for the forest. And we won't know about that until. Probably about April twenty twenty six. Before we would know if we got the grant. So there's a lot of moving parts there, but just an early heads up that that's a discussion, the program's only a couple of years old and it's, it's got traction. And now that some of the parents involved have asked about. Expanding it into elementary age. Which is why then they're like, well, we really don't have a place to take elementary kids to learn how to mountain bike here, so. Stay tuned, if you, if you ask, well, what does that entail, it would basically entail putting class five or something hard like that for the bikers to ride on, because they ride on dirt trails. There's a company here in town that does that.
Candy.
Candy, yeah, and they worked on some of the trails throughout the county and. They've been in conversation with that developer. Yeah, so early heads up, it's nothing official yet, it's just an idea that came to us. And then the other thing I wanted to make sure everyone is aware of is, I was under the understanding that the open meeting law changes that were passed in the legislative session started August first. That is incorrect, it is in effect now. So as of now, the open meeting law has changed and school board members who are remote don't need to post their address. So we posted carries in here in case she showed up, but that is no longer a requirement. And if we have a board member or one or more board members that are participating in the meeting virtually, then all votes have to be roll call. So we just have to remember that protocol. And the requirement is that everybody can hear and see each other and the public can hear and see everybody. So we're actually tooled up to do that quite easily for our business meetings, we've got all the technology, should be, may actually be a really great thing for Cook County for. Having three board members that live an hour away, you know, that there may be days when that's advantageous to us, but just know the law changed, there's a lot more flexibility now for districts like us.
It's interesting because that's the way it was during COVID. Then after kind of COVID went away, they took it back and went to the in-person, but that's almost the same.
It's identical, yeah, yeah, and then now one person, one of you has to be here. By law.
And I think that's the way it was before too, somebody had to be in the room.
Was it?
Where the public meeting is scheduled to be held, because at least we had to do that with. With the commissioners.
Sure.
Because I was interim then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so I had to always be there and then everybody else was on the.
So, I think one of the elected officials has to be at the.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, yeah, but I view them as positive changes, it is a twenty first century, you know, we can use our technology and, and as long as we are live streaming to the public. However, a discussion point came up this morning in our regional superintendents meeting that I think is an astute point. One of the superintendents asked about allowing community comment via Zoom. And the advice of MSBA and I concur is that that is a bad idea. If we, if someone wants to make public comment. It would be wise for us to make it our policy to have them sign up and be here and be in the meeting, otherwise we'd get comment from people that don't even live in our district and. You know, it just kind of opens a Pandora's box.
Sure, sure, that's a good point.
Some of those crazy hoops that could, could happen. But anyway, sure, those are the two items in my report, that's all I've got and. Nothing else, we can move on.
Okay, alright, well, yeah, we did thirteen months of meetings and roll call votes, so we're good at that. Okay, seven point O is our consent agenda. There's anything that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Say so, otherwise we just need a motion. I want you to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, consent agenda is adopted. Alright, discussion and action items, eight point one is to accept the May expenditure revenue report for May of twenty twenty five. It's in the packet here. And we've got Ms. Overg in the, in the house as well.
I honestly don't have it right in front of me. There's a couple of items on the agenda that were.
Sure.
I can load up on my phone now. If you have questions.
I got you. We're. So it's for May, so this is almost.
We're almost, yes, yes.
Almost at the end of the year.
Thank you. Um, let's see if I have anything to draw your attention to. Nothing significant, I think if you scroll down tiny bit more, Chris, I do have. Okay, yeah. Yeah, ninety-two percent of the year, we're still receiving our revenues now is when the. This report will start to look weird because, you know, we'll move into, you know, the summer months and we'll still be cleaning up. The fiscal year because our fiscal year will end in June, so we'll have one more month. Of that activity, but then doesn't, I don't wash over until we close up completely fiscal year twenty five, so. I think we're on track to end pretty even keel, I don't anticipate any craziness. And I think we'll talk a little bit more about it when we get to the budget conversations.
Do you do the like summer payments in June, is that when that happens?
Yep, so June tenth and twenty fifth are payrolls, so tenth is the big balloon payment per se. Where teachers received the payout of their contract. And then the twenty fifth payroll, they received any other like stipend things for carryout training and being on certain. Committees or BLT, so the building leadership team, so anything else that was voucher like that comes in June.
So for Quinn's sake, since this is your first run through the end of year, our teachers get paid on twenty-four paychecks. But they get all of June, July and August on June tenth. So in, my wife's a teacher, so I see six checks that, and then you gotta just budget it out. And then the last payroll in June, that's when there's cleanup on stipend, stuff like that.
And the reason we do that is, I mean, if I were to be paying everyone in July and August, it'd be a lot of backwork to have to then, you know, reconcile that for our fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth.
Right.
So it just makes it easier and.
Pretty common.
Cleaner.
And that probably, and that's why we're only eighty percent of our total budget in May, even though we only have one more month.
So that number will be high, much higher end of June.
Right.
Okay. Yeah.
Perfect.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Think I might have to pop out of the seat because it might be someone else next.
I'd be mad.
Alright, any? Alright, and if there are any other questions, we just need to.
Steven, you can sit here if you want. No worries.
I'll make a motion to accept the revenue expense report.
Alright, second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed, motion carries, alright, eight point two discussion item, the, we got the ISB one sixty-six activities handbook here.
Yeah, I'll tee this up, so welcome to Steven Anderson, Steven was hired as our activities director in the departure of Marley. And so as he's starting to grab the reins, one of the things he is an advocate for and is definitely supported by Josh and me is. Clarity of expectations and what are the rules and what do we expect from coaches and what do we expect as a system? And so he has. Done what I like to do is steal the good product from somewhere else and then tweak it and massage it to fit Cook County in. In a handbook, you'll notice in your agenda, it does not say approve. My intent on that was that you would chew a little bit tonight. And then sit on it for a month so you have time to ask Steven or I, or Josh questions. And then we'd approve it in July with the other slate of handbooks that'll be coming your way, so with that, Steven, do you want to give a?
Yeah.
A minute somewhere here.
The handbook itself is very dense, it's meant to cover my role as activities director, the activities that we have. Both athletics and events, clubs, whatever, it falls under my jurisdiction as activities director. Coaches expectations, assistant coaches expectations, athlete expectations, parent guardian, spectators. And then there's a small section there about what we want from our booster club. And then how that purchasing donations kind of that exchange at first, just to protect the district. And the reason I want this is because it makes, it's gonna make my job easier if I can lay all this out. Light work ahead of time, I've got this all back on for expectations for. Again, all those people that I just described as above. Just makes clarity and process here a little bit more uniform across the board through all activities, athletics, everything. So it is a dense document, my ideal situation would be this is the overarching document and then I can. Create subdocuments to make it a little bit more digestible on the district website, so that way they can find the lettering policy, they can find. The coaches that are listed, they can find the spectator. So this would be the overarching document and then pull small documents that are a little bit more digestible and easier to consume for our community. So I'm, this is by no means a polished, fully polished product, I just wanted to do the light work on this in advance rather than. Starting this on August, so I would like this to be approved by August, so I think we were talking about it being approved in July. And by no means am I expecting you to have this all mastered and memorized, just like I don't expect that for everyone, but it's a tool that I would like to be able to use forward.
So this is, this is new, we haven't done this before, right? Okay. Alright, that's great, I, I read, I did read it actually.
Thank you.
Yeah, I. I didn't even fall asleep, so, but I appreciated that, I guess this is just a comment more than anything, I appreciated that. There's guidelines for like parents and guardians just in terms of their expectations too and how they interface when there are like conflicts or complaints arise. So I think that's good for sure, to have that be pretty clear because it will, and then I assume this is gonna end up being handed out to all the athletes or they're gonna have acknowledged receipt of it to some degree.
That'd be my ideal situation is that it's just another box that they can check on when they go to register via Anthony Campus. Yes, that's just like the MSHSL one, I'm acknowledging, I'm acknowledging, and then it's posted digitally for public.
Sure, yeah, and having, being able to point to that, I, I would anticipate being helpful just kind of managing some of those situations like, okay, so we handle these as a policy, so. I appreciated that being included here.
And I will go through another run through of this before, final, given the final, yeah, my final product in July, so I will weekend update, but it'll still be on that live document. Okay. If you have any questions or you got questions after this meeting adjourned, then just be your welcome to shoot me an email, if you have current concerns, just let me know.
Yeah, good. You have any questions or comments right now?
But, no, I don't, no. It's the whole thing.
Okay, I will, I know. Good, well, now you're on the spot. Well, thanks for coming, it's good to, good to meet you, thanks for coming to the meeting and taking this on, taking the initiative to do this, I think it's a great idea.
I think Steven's also already had football coach. And that teacher, of course.
Yeah, well, that's, as it goes in Cook County. And I suppose you guys are gonna be starting to tee up summer, summer programming and so.
I'll just give you, like, I don't have a formal IDs report because my position hasn't formally started, but I will, I am trying to get something like that going in the future. But our volleyball program, we had a turnover coaching with Marley's departure as well, Sue Brown took that over, she's doing. Summer weekly practices for volleyball program, basketball is practices on Tuesday nights. Obviously, they're not required by any means, but they are. Positive things that we can do for our students, I do football practices on Monday nights as well, I have summer football camp set up and then. Junior high, elementary, upper elementary level camp scheduled once my football season begins, it's done by my app. Lots of positive stuff happening.
Fitness Center is running?
Fitness Center is running, I've got a couple brainstorming things for when that gets going in terms of. The new building process and things like that, but I was just there this morning and there's students from cross-country, basketball, football, and there's been volleyball athletes there before, so it's. Good fun that being used and used appropriately, Mike Tiesman spearheads that and does an amazing job with that, so. Kudos to him.
For sure. Awesome.
Alright, thank you, Steven.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you so much, well, thanks for taking on this job.
I'm gonna fail.
Alright.
This is entertaining, come on. Alright, you guys are up, gentlemen.
Alright, so eight point three, we have on the agenda to approve the design development documents. Which are, we had a presentation in the packet along with the complete drawing set. And we've got Matt and Damon from ICS and Catherine from DSGW on the line. Maybe others?
No, thank you, Dan, that's kind of introductions, I'm Matt Hughes with the ICS project manager, joined by Damon Williams behind me, project director. And Catherine, who's gonna be online, I'm cutting through a few slides for us. So tonight, summer two SD approval, we're gonna be running through the design developments, overview and approval. As they get into this a little bit, I'll straight that, so agenda tonight is we're gonna go through drawing set review. Once I get through my couple of slides here, I'll hand over to Kat, run through our seven or eight architectural slides and then I'll finish off the site plan. For that, we'll get into our project budget estimate review, I'm gonna go over overall project schedule that the group's seen in a few minutes here. Give ICS recommendations and we go through the next steps of design and get to construction here.
And for Quinn's sake, just, never mind, you're gonna see it right now.
Yes, so like I said, we're gonna go through the DD drawing set and the next eight slides roughly, these are all the same DD design documents that. Over half the people in this room have already looked at, so Dan, Rena, Chris, etc., looked through this all, two weeks ago in person here. Actually did a roughly a four hour page turn, the project consultants here, so it was a pretty lengthy POC meeting, not a normal POC meeting. But that's what we did two weeks ago, and like I said, it was a in-person page turn, we spent roughly an hour for architectural, then I think about half an hour with each other consultant, mechanical, structural, structures. With that, I'll hand it off to Kat online here, she's gonna start with the code plan that just kind of shows an overall view of the project, then I dissect into each. Construction, I don't want to be touching, so. Take it away, Kat.
Alrighty, thanks, hi everyone. We'll try to keep it short and sweet, because I think, again, most people have seen this, I think Quinn will give you kind of the, the bird's eye view of it. So code plan here shows our overall, the overall building, anything in gray is your existing structure right now. The red elements are gonna be our areas where we're gonna be doing new additions, so new added square footage that will be done to the building. And then a number of, part of the gray will include then a number of those kind of interior remodel portions with new classrooms. Updates to classrooms, roofing. Bathrooms, programming and things like that for the majority here, but. This is kind of the main, the main plan that the state reviews, this does go to the state for final review and permitting. And so code plan is kind of one of their main items that they, they look out for essentially your life safety, egressing, occupancy loads, calculations and such like that, so. So we can go to the next slide. One thing to note, so if you look in the, the right side of the title block, you'll see kind of a key plan above kind of the number A, two point one A. So that key plan essentially divides the whole school up into, I think it's seven different areas. Solely so we can fit each portion of the building or a chunk of the building onto our drawing sheet. So when we refer to kind of area A or area E, again, it's just kind of, we kind of started area A, the new kind of main entry and then kind of work counterclockwise around the building that way, so. Anything like windows and doors and room numbers and such like that will be tagged per area. Just again, to kind of keep in mind when we, kind of some of the wayfinding potentially when we reference a few things, but. So area A here is gonna be our new main student services addition, which will include the new administration, district administration, nursing and counseling. A new canopy, front entry walkway, front vestibule, and then revisions to Ojibwe AAC space, media commons. Toilet updates here and then some classroom updates. And then we'll move to area B. And area B, we're really, architecturally, we are not touching really anything in here minus the deferred maintenance, which will be the new. Window replacements in this area here. So that is all for area B. And then area C is gonna be kind of our elementary wing, area B was our, the performing arts area, so area C. Again, not too much going on in area C, a lot of deferred maintenance for the window replacements, a few door replacement. The, kind of the main thing in area C here is gonna be our toilets, our revisions to our toilets here. And is what, what is not showing on this kind of DD set is kind of a slight update to the toilet layout. But these will kind of be universal toilets slash individual boys and girls toilets, at least that is what we are going to submit to the state. It is not hode, meaning it's not essentially officially law that we can do this, but we've done it in multiple schools, we just have to submit additional. An additional form and some additional information noting why universal toilets are beneficial in this area, as well as throughout the other. Areas of the school, we are putting these here, so nothing new we haven't done, it's just kind of unfortunately not part of the code. But fingers crossed in a couple of years it will be. And then other items, kind of to note in area C here, again, just updates to some of the classrooms, special ed area. The elementary media center, some additional kind of group rooms, testing rooms placed into there, and then kind of the. The core between the elementary media center and then the high school media center are some offices and kind of flex rooms, group rooms, areas in between those. In between those two main libraries there, so. That's about it for this one. We can go to area D, area D is gonna be kind of the, that kind of center portion of the building, elementary gym area, cafeteria. And then kitchen and building services space here, so the updates we're doing in this area is the existing. Storage and old locker rooms that are in elementary gym, turning that into a central staff lounge with some seating. And toilets and kitchen in that space there. Kind of replacing the storage then that we're taking from the gym, moving it to the north side of the elementary gym, there'll be some storage cages there. And then a new office for the gym teacher, just to the north of that is our new building services addition that'll connect into the existing building services. And then directly out to the exterior there with an overhead door and a man door. Into that area. Cafeteria. Essentially, we're not doing, I'll say, a ton of work in here, but hopefully it'll, it'll, what we are doing is gonna hopefully help. Kind of the flow and, and the aesthetic of the space, so we'll be doing some cosmetic updates. The kind of the main thing we are doing is moving that entrance that is currently kind of in the middle of the cafeteria over to the east side. And kind of helping with the flow of the traffic during lunch hour time and then creating a, kind of a bigger area for a presentation wall. Kind of community meetings and such here, we are then proposing or putting in some kind of coiling counter doors, overhead coiling doors to secure off the kitchen space so you can. Kind of have after hours events in here and not have to worry about the security in the kitchen area. Couple kind of large overhead kind of garage doors and a man door to again, try to help open up some of that for larger flow of traffic in and out there. And then the other main thing on this space is the bathrooms, the bathroom bank there, the existing men's and women's bathrooms. Turning those here into the universal toilet, so using the square footage that is there, but then just turning them into individual. Universal, so boys or girls shared bathrooms within the common sink area in the middle there. And then we go to area E. Area E is going to be our athletics zone, so we're adding the new single station gym as well as kind of some storage area. In between the two spaces, existing gym and the new gym there. We are, we have a, kind of a stair that'll go up to a mezzanine space. Similar to the kind of roof access stair that you have right now off the corridor. And then in the new, so this will be new addition, so this is new square footage with the gym. We do have a new kind of entry vestibule and then a athletics common area that we are with. How we do seating and furniture in here, kind of proposing that can be potentially an added. Kind of classroom learning space there with, we'll put a monitor and some sort of digital display board in there for. Coaches or team training or things like that, then we have the new fitness. Room there, and then rough changing area, mother's room and family restroom. And then we have our bank of men's and women's toilets and then our two girls and boys locker rooms with each a couple. Toilets and shower rooms in there. And then we are doing the updates to the existing locker room to the shower area, so we will have individual shower stalls. These will be not full walls. Um, so we will have um, individual shower um, stalls. These will be um, not um, full walls. Um, and like curtain, these will be just kind of your like, kind of your toilet partitions. Um, so they, but they will be individual and they'll be divided into kind of the wet zone and the dry zone. Um, with that door, again, for some of that more security and privacy that um, more folks want these days here. Um, and um, I think that's kind of the main components of area E right now. And then we can go to area F. And not too much happening in area F. Um, we've updated a couple of things since we've printed these drawings here, but the main thing with area F. Is that flex room, um, added classroom space that is out in the corridor or kind of bumps out into that corridor area there, that kind of diamond triangular piece. Um, and that is again, kind of at the center of the school. Um, hopefully it can function uh, multiple different ways, classroom space. Um, community space, um, overflow space during lunch hours, um, for the students and then. Um, kind of the community space that is kind of maybe after hours, if there is that event in the cafeteria. Both with the cafeteria garage doors and then a garage door here in the flex room again, to just open that up for allow. Um, for more just nice flow between, between that space out into that hallway there. Um, and then a number of um, deferred maintenance um, window um, updates also in this area here. And I think that's it for that. And then area G is kind of the, we like area G because we're not doing any work architecturally over here. Um, but we do include it in our sheet set, um, as there is some updates and stuff with um, mechanical, um, and electrical. Kind of over in this area here, so, um, but really this is kind of that back um, hallway where the bathrooms and old locker rooms are. Um, that's kind of portion of the district and a portion of the YMCA, so, um, and then a little bit of the, the culinary that is back in this wing here too, but. Um, architecturally, we um, we are not doing anything with that, so. Um, and I think, I think that was the last slide for me, Matt. I went through it very quick because Matt told me to go really quick, so I tried.
Yeah? Alright, so that was kind of architectural overview with no mechanical. Let's head into that, what we're gonna be doing. Um, this plan sheet here is the site plan, so I'll kind of, I'll kind of start in the northwest, plan northwest corner, kind of work my way counterclockwise around. Um, but your highlight there is a retaining wall. I'm kind of showing up in the screen right here, so we're adding this, um, because it's needed. There's a lot of great change there, but to me. It's much green space on that existing field as we can. Um, you can kind of see an overview of uh, the gym box and building services addition there, fitness addition. Just sideways sidewalk wrapping all the way around that. Um, a bunch of concrete we're proposing there for um, just kind of a. Gathering area for students when they get off buses or teams or anything and they have a, a spot to sit, we can um, maybe potentially throw some picnic tables or some kind of element there. Um, repaving all that access road, for lack of better terms, that cul-de-sac there as well, because we're tearing it up for construction anyways and it's in pretty bad shape, so we're. Replacing that, um, moving down to the sawtooth area. Um, you can see the staircase kind of shown there. It's pretty small. This is where existing staircases right here. Um, so we're gonna be taking that out, replacing that, I'm adding a, a U-shaped upside down U-shaped ramp there to make it accessible down to. Um, the playground. Um, you'll see a change here, um, your asphalt paving area is actually gonna flip. So it's gonna be turf on the north side, closer to the football field and asphalt on the south side. I'm overdoing that, so it's um, easy straight shot for students or staff or maintenance staff to clear that asphalt off. You're coming right off existing paved areas and not crossing onto, uh, crossing across your new green spacer, turf reviewing now, obviously. But just making it easier for everybody there. Obviously, we're um, getting a couple of new pieces of playground equipment, doing a port in place rubber servicing on the playground, so. Um, that's the, the eastern square block of that area. I'll bounce down to the bus garage there. There's a portion of the bus garage that's paved. We're just taking that over to replace or uh, pave the entire bus lot. Um, garage area, so that's what you see there. It's not really shown too on the plan here. That area is obviously way off to the east. Um, that's an area in the corner, bottom right. Um, moving west, we're gonna be uh, taking out, replacing the asphalt trail right out here. It's in pretty tough shape, so it was one of the deferred maintenance items, obviously, that we're. Sticking through to the project. We'll wrap around to student services addition. We can see the building addition there, ever so tiny. We're just gonna be more or less expanding kind of what you have there going south. So a bunch of new concrete, the canopy area will be. Uh, in this area right here, um, just more or less pushing everything farther south, maintaining more or less the same look of a channel. Couple of inflate holes down there, um, looking into replacing that part of that wing wall too, so you can have a, a spot to take pictures and whatever for graduation or last day of school. So, so it's kind of a site plan. There isn't too many changes here from, from what you kind of would have talked about. During SD, the biggest thing is probably that retaining wall. That's just to uh, maintain as much green space as we possibly can in there to make it, make it a usable field for soccer, football practices. Whatever goes up on there, so. That's the site plan. Now we'll get into the fun stuff. This is our design development estimate. So this is the same document, same kind of processes, procedures we followed. To take off the project when we did receive um, the DD design estimates or DD, DD design documents on May thirtieth, so. This took two or three weeks, had multiple people kind of take their own step at S and be um, you know, share our results. Um, fact check ourselves, and this is what we came up with for an estimate. So the top right, you'll see the square footage. We really didn't change any of the square footage. Very minor, so if you, um, anybody has an SD document, um, you'll see that the square footages are almost. Batching exactly what they were um, during the SD phase, so, um, seventeen thousand four hundred square feet for the gym addition. Um, seven thousand forty-two feet for the advent and flex area additions, flexes that pop out of the courtyard. And then the area three of the remodels, point five thousand four hundred square feet, so. Same construction budget. And we can see the various different item descriptions, building demo, structure, enclosure, shuttle, so on. Then our total costs, associated square foot cost to the right of that. We, we're able to get a lot better of a takeoff this time around. SD, we're working off of predominantly square footage numbers, so we're throwing a number to a square footage, taking that off. Now we actually have about two hundred plan sheets. You only saw about eight or nine of them there, um, but with exterior elevations. We're counting doors, counting windows, linear for the parapets, like um, placing roofing, roofing, etc., so. This is a lot more finely tuned estimate than uh, SB. Um, and as you can see, that's why I kind of changed the estimate contingency. In SD, we had a five percent estimate contingency, bumped that down to three percent. Because we actually have documents more or less. Just that, our plan basically is on first slide, we'll go over, just take it square footage of new and remodel areas, putting in that, so. Um, so that's my total is fifteen million eight hundred and three thousand. Contractor overhead and profit was um, seven hundred and ninety thousand. I think it should see, like I said, bump from five percent to three percent, roughly four hundred and seventy-four thousand. Then a percent cost escalation, three percent, just because we're taking this off. A few months before we put it out to bid, so that's what that three percent is covering, roughly four hundred and seventy-four thousand. Brand total of seventeen million five hundred and forty-one thousand. I'm like comparing that to our budgets, puts us over by four hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. So if you remember from SD, that number was roughly one hundred and twenty-five thousand. There's a couple of items that are kicking this up. Um, one item is um, doing new stormwater structures within the courtyard. There's some existing deferred maintenance type items that we have to fix in there, water infiltrating through the walls and the solving in the classroom. Um, being that we're adding into that courtyard, it's a trigger by the state. We have to bring everything up to code and upsize it anyways. So currently it's a six inch, uh, more or less piping in bad shape. We have to upsize that to ten or twelve inch, depending on the slope. And that's just an item, whether you're adding a, a square footage in that space or not, it's kind of something probably should take care of just to mitigate any. Future issues, water infiltration issues getting into the um, wing of classrooms to the south there, so. We have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted in this. Um, I have that um, under special construction there, so two hundred and fifty thousand, so that was a big. Um, add kicker to the project that wasn't captured in SD just because didn't know it was an issue in SD. Um, so that was right, we were getting kind of started, I think, in some of these areas, so. That's a big change. Another one is propane gas line relocation. So your existing propane line has a couple. Um, different runs. One goes to your boiler room, I'm wrapping on the north side of the current gym. That the line runs um, to building services. Obviously, we're tearing that area out. We gotta reroute the gas lines. Even our new gym box addition cuts right over the main gas line that the interior boilers for the school. So there's a, a bottle on your feet of gas piping that's, has to be relocated, relocated in there, and it is buried quite deep. Um, it's just a unnecessary evil more or less, so that's another forty thousand dollar. Um, item that's captured in these item descriptions that, that you're not necessarily seeing broken out here. That's, that's captured. So there's a couple of items like that, um, that are driving the price higher. Again, we're, we're working off of uh, square footage numbers when we're taking out pre-cast walls, exterior walls, etc. So this is a, more or less a realized than when compared to that square foot views. And again, this is the overall project summary, the budget summary. Seen this a couple of times. Um, there isn't too many changes here. We'll see a few changes in our cost of date column, just as we're invoicing monthly, consultants are invoicing. Um, we got all our soil and testing afterward here, site survey items captured here, so you'll see the changes um, in the cost of date column. Um, one item I will mention is the original budget for the playground donation went up a hundred thousand dollars, actually from zero to a hundred thousand dollars, so that's a. That's a change you'll see under uh, one point oh seven. Playground stuff is separate from construction costs, so. Where we didn't capture that, the, the previous sheet with the estimate. Um. But overall, construction cost seventeen one one six is the same number that's on the estimate spreadsheet. Seeing overall project balance of one point six six million dollars, just because that is uh, some interest earnings dollars that um, we've had for a few months now. Captured in one point oh five, um, that we're leaving unallocated for now, till we maybe get closer to putting this out to. Was captured as a, more or less a contingency right now. So that's overall budget summary. Talk about the schedule now, so we're uh, on item number eleven, DD board approval on June twenty-sixth. This is the same schedule, no modifications here. As we've seen this multiple times, um, so, so maybe we can get DDs approved here tonight. I'm under our recommendation, formally move into construction document phase. Kind of already there for the last two weeks, just because uh, last week was goofy with the holiday, but we'll continue to process DCDs and work through that with the design team. The next couple of months to the end of August. Again, we'll do another estimate then, put in front of you guys, some of our funding documents, put it out to bid this fall.
We're putting out to bid in the fall.
Yeah, I have bidding uh, October, October third. Alright, so under our recommendation, ICS recommends approval of county schools' design development documents as presented. And not formal authorization perceived with instruction documents. Um, some of our next steps are like I said, only um, starting commencing with the construction document phase of design, during that we'll. Get into the finer detail, final selection of materials, picking out flooring, paint colors, buildings, stuff like that. Or, or user groups and uh, POC types, that's s- style meetings, um. The group that will complete the construction egress phase of plan over the next couple of minutes. But that'll open it up to any questions anybody has on documents.
Um, just one quick little comment, when Kat was running through like, the area she mentioned in a variety of areas, like we're not doing anything but deferred maintenance. She was talking about windows and stuff. We're also replacing all the lights everywhere. So that's another thing in all those areas, for what it's worth.
Yeah, that'll be areas A direct, everything besides the YMCA will be getting all the lighting. There's a select few areas, like the auditorium has newer lighting. Um, I think your corner space had newer lighting in the last five years, so we're replacing it with more or less the same stuff that's already installed. So there's a, there's a couple's particular rooms that we're, we're skipping over as far as, for its lighting.
There's some flooring in the hallways and then some wall tile.
Not bathroom tile on the hallway walls?
It is.
I have an opinion about that.
Yeah. Looks like guest station.
So the approval of this, those, those are the plant sets. They don't change.
Uh, it will change slightly, but your square footages aren't gonna change anymore. Maybe a one or two square feet, select areas. Right now, the CD phase is just um, material selection more or less. It might be, you might need to move your flag holes from. One side of the courtyard to the other. We're working through design and mechanic, but right now, pick out um, items for the back area. Adding concrete, moving grass here or there, but it's not gonna be changing the structure layout of the building at this point, that would be established at the DD of the border.
During our extensive page turn, meeting, or review, uh, we do have lots of comments that we'll be picking up in the. Early, the early stages of construction documents, uh, little improvements, all things we caught, little things that we wanted to, you know, change for the better. So we'll be, we'll be uh, we coming Charlie.
Yeah, and for your benefit, when we talked a fair amount about uh, sort of the, the budget has increased a little bit there. Basically, because of that water issue, we kind of, we dug into that a fair amount, and at this point, it's still like a. Kind of a question mark what that's gonna turn into, which is why, I mean, we haven't, we haven't like allocated our contingency to it. We haven't taken that out of the project, because it's, there's just like still a lot we don't know about what that could turn into. It seems like that's maybe like worst case scenario, hopefully, but maybe not, so. So kind of, it makes sense to kind of keep forging ahead with those plans, and then there's still a lot of time for. Things to kind of sort out.
As a process, as we do the process, we learn a lot about the building, uh, for, for the good and, and sometimes for, maybe not, not, not so good, but. You know, we're gonna make sure we address the issues that we, that we find on, in time for.
Man, something I just thought of that, I don't know why it's taken me this long. Is at the end of the hallway around the corner by what's now um, special ed room, the art room, special ed room. And at the very end, there's uh, the old WTIP office, that's mental health. Never thought about asking her the question if she actually wants a window for some daylight in there, because it's like a cave.
Sure.
So I will ask her. She may say no because of privacy and confidentiality, uh, but it's just a cave of a space.
I think Kat's on the call here, so she can write that down and we can uh, talk about that next Tuesday.
Yeah.
I know, I know when we gave the, the elementary gym teacher a window, she was like, I'm done. That's all I need. I don't care, so.
That was a mic drop moment.
Yeah, okay.
Um, okay, so any other questions or, or comments? We, we have, yeah, Rita and I have been a, a big part of this, so we're kind of gotten into it, so to the extent. There's anything else you wanna chat about.
The four hours.
Thank you all for the team.
Trust that you were thrown, used your four hours wisely.
In fact, it went over.
Maybe we had another one.
Another meeting yesterday.
Oh, yesterday, yeah. Talking about the canopy at length.
Okay, um, cool. Alright, so.
Make the motion.
Yeah.
To approve the design documents as presented. I'll make that motion.
I second. Okay, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, most carrots. Alright.
Go guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Yep.
Rest of this is almost.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Cap.
Have a good one.
You're on.
I've been in most places with like musical chairs.
Um, yeah, thanks guys for uh, walking through that one, so. Budgets. Um, alright, so next we've got eight point four, which is to approve our uh. Fiscal year twenty-six district budget. Um, and we've got that in the pack here, along with an narrative.
Yes.
Over as well.
Um, we should go through the slides. Chris, are you throwing off there? You have them on your, on your. Um, computer.
I'm trying, but look, pull it up on your laptops today.
Yeah. Um, the narrative, what I put in the slides is basically just the numbers, the graph, the, the charts. Um, the narrative I found, I think all of the mistakes that were in there and corrected them all. I apologize for that. Um, so anyways, let's, we can walk through it. Uh, the first slide is talking um, primarily about our assumptions and our highlights. So we discussed was at length, probably what, three months ago. Um, and kind of what we, the framework of the knowns that we were going to build a budget on. Um, and the second slide is the strategic roadmap, kind of. The framework that we use to make sure that we align our budget with our. Um, goals and our mission. And so from that, we get our budget. I don't know, am I at the right slide now? Oh, our enrollment. Um, so our enrollment numbers, is this the chart that has the. Many years comparison and then even pushing out to the next year. Um, we left our enrollment fairly even keel with previous year or current year. Um, it dips down slightly just because of those small classes that we've been talking about in kindergarten that are coming in. So we're graduating larger classes than we're bringing new in. We do collect some of those students back in the. Upper elementary, upper elementary and then into high school. Um, so we're staying pretty flat as far as our enrollment from this last year.
Like estimates or what's actually, who's actually.
Um, in kindergarten, I believe it was. At one point it was twenty four, but the last I've heard it was twenty, it was nineteen maybe.
Nineteen, I think that's the last number.
So it's kind of a little bit changing, but I think twenty is maybe a good start. Um, for kindergarten for this year, because I think we, there was potential for twenty four at one point, but I think we're solid nineteen. So those are our numbers that we're working with. I think they are realistic, but hopefully. Conservative. And when I say conservative, it's like a one or a two, you know, our, we don't, we don't fluctuate by leaps and bounds. We fluctuate by little numbers. So. Um, okay, so then moving to the next screen is our general fund. Um, and I think earlier this month, we looked at kind of like a hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit that I don't really. Consider a deficit because we have assigned funds that we can use for our bus purchases and our technology that. We have budgeted to spend, so whether or not this is presented more as a balanced budget. We did switch out, so a few things changed in here because we did now hire an occupational therapist, a speech therapist. And a nurse, so some of the. Purchased services shifted into actual salary, so I did make those adjustments to the budget. So if you compare side to side with the one from earlier in the month, it might look a little different.
Uh, how does it compare? I mean, is it cheaper for us to have a month staff?
For the most part.
Hopefully, yeah. Um, yeah, I would say, yeah, cheaper to have a month staff.
Cause obviously better. I was just wondering how.
Alright, it's basically, I bet basically a one for one. We do have a speech therapist that is. What, what is Jane appoint? Two?
Uh, point, two days week, so point four.
Point four. Um, so she is in the building, but she's contracted.
Okay.
So, um, I, I think it's awesome that we have all these trained professionals that are here. Like, I can't imagine speech therapy on a screen with delay. Don't, that's not functional, so it's, it's awesome. So anyways, in the budget, I did make those adjustments, though we are currently looking at a, you know, two hundred thousand dollar. Deficit, but like I said, with our assigned funds and restricted funds that will be being used, I believe that will be. Uh, closer to a flat balance, but. Um, so.
Finally, I got it up for you.
With that note, though, we still have that situation of our fund balance that, you know, we're, it's flat. But if our expenses are going up and our goal is twenty five percent of our. Unassigned fund balance, then we need to maybe instead of flat, we need to maybe start. Increasing, so finding ways to not just stay flat, so. I say that, I mean, I think we're doing okay. I think we. Through COVID, we fared well and we were able to build some of that fund balance, and so I think it's healthy, but it's also. You know, needs to be on our radar. Um, okay, so then into food service. Um, now I think that the revenue is under budgeted for this year. For current FY twenty five, with a state reimbursement of free meals. So I believe we're going to actually probably have a surplus going into next year. Um, currently, next year is expected to spend down a little bit. We might have to start thinking about spending down. With the, with the referendum project, we could use some of those funds to purchase the furniture for the. For the cafeteria, because I believe FY twenty seven, we're going to have to, we can only have three months of operating. In our reserve fund, which is about a hundred and thirty thousand, and we're currently at also a hundred and fifty.
And we can use it for fresh.
We can use it for like, uh, tables and we can't use it for, it's, it's kind of weird. There's weird, some weird rules about it. You can use it for flooring in the cafeteria, but not flooring in the kitchen. You can use it for, I mean, it's just, it's really weird, but we can buy, if we, because I think we're doing new tables, aren't we?
We are, and that law changed just like two years ago, so.
Yes, so that might be a really appropriate way to use some of those funds, just so that we don't, because if we don't use them, then we have to have a plan as to how we're going to spend it down. So I know you, some of you have had history of that.
Makes perfect sense, Quinn. How much money is in the bank? You gotta spend it.
Gotta spend it. Well, then I think we're doing a better job. Like, I think. Yeah, we're, right, exactly. Purchasing local food is expensive, but we've had some grants, and so. If we keep doing some of that, we can kind of get back at that, at that balance level. Um, okay, moving into fund four, next slide. Um, fund four is always, you know, kind of that whatever doesn't get supported, fund one supports, but it's doing, it's doing really good. We have the preschool, it's wrong with the tuition programming and Kate does a really good job of. You know, collecting tuition payments online, there's option, so that, I, I think that program is really excelling. Um, it's maintaining its own. I think also all the youth programming, the sports, that's getting back up and running. And so I think fund four is starting to stabilize a little better than when I first got here, seemed a little bit herky jerky all over the place. Um, but I equally am learning how. Support fund four with support with fund one, because they kind of inter, interweave, especially when it comes to preschool.
Preschool.
Because there's funds in fund one that pay for BPK, which is preschool, and so it's a lot of. They like to call it blending and braiding of funding. So, yeah, guys, so I was just talking with Lacy and telling her that she was doing a good job of braiding. Um, but so grants and tech night revenue offset expense here in the fund four. I think that it's going to be probably a balanced budget. We have a fund, reserve fund that is seemingly healthy and so moving forward. Um, the next two slides are really just the construction, fund six and fund seven, which is our debt service payments. So construction, I have said it before, we recognize the revenue in FY twenty five this year. And then now in all the subsequent years, if we will have only the revenue of interest, so. Four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars, whatever, as we move on, and then we'll be seeing large. Um, deficit spending because we will be building things.
Building things.
Things, and then we'll see the repayment of that debt in fund seven. So, um, the, if you look at this year compared to next year, we're, you know, paying seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of debt. Versus, you know, two million. And so the, and the statute says we need to, I think it's a hundred and five percent of statute, the revenue, so we always have to make sure we have enough. Revenue to pay for the debt with a tiny bit of.
And so by next year, we'll start paying the tax, right?
Revenue coming in.
Revenue coming, coming in.
So in the case of like, for the construction budget for. We, like you said, we recognize the revenue this year, next year, we're not really getting revenue, obviously lots of expenditures. How do you, where do you sort of capture what that balance is? You know, it's, we didn't get the revenue this year, we're just recording the expenditures. But like, where are we actually like, but there's money, right?
Sure.
The money sitting there is just not on this year's like revenue line.
Right.
Like, where's that balance sort of represented, you know, this?
In our PMA account that's isolated for that.
It's a stick to once a month, is it?
So.
And does that like get recorded on some of our like accounting? Or is there like, you know what I mean? Is there like a, an accounts balance kind of section, you know, like the big account? He's actually in it.
Right, I, I guess they don't really do that. That is only stated annually, and then it's shown, it's shown on our electronic. So the electronic payments is when I'm moving funds from where our balances are sitting to our general fund. Um, so when we're talking about, I mean, I do have a. A sheet that I, that could show, we could look at it more, where we could isolate that.
I'm just kind of curious like what the visualization, visualization is like as we kind of get a couple of years down the line and we're no longer. Comparing back to fiscal twenty five.
Right.
Which shows all that revenue, you know what I mean, like.
Right, and when we look at our, when we look at our monthly statement, how I have it currently, it's gonna look weird. So I could at least take fund six out of it completely and put that on its own line down below, you know, because it just is going to throw everything off. Always, it's gonna look like this big deficit spend. Um, so I, we're not the only district that has had this situation, so I'll look at my, some of my peers and see how they. Relay that information.
We also get that statement, I think, once a month from PMA, or quarterly at least, that shows. You and I get it?
Yeah.
We, we could just make that available to the board as we.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's an easy stuff. That's a simple thing to do.
Right, right, well, and. I see what you're saying. You wanted to see, you just want to see year-to-date in that bu- in that bucket.
Right, like, cause as we're plodding expenses, that's going to go down too, right?
Right.
Like theoretically, they should kind of adjust at the same rate.
Right, and so for the board, like all of our accounts, I show you in our audit, that's when I show you, you know, like where are all those buckets at?
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's kind of when we look at that.
Sure.
But if you'd like more often to see that, absolutely.
I'm just kind of curious, I was not necessarily, I was just kind of curious like how we would kind of keep an eye on that as we go.
Right, we will be seeing equally from ICS, I'm keep, gonna be keeping my own track of, you know, expenses, just because. We want to make sure that they're matching, right? Like I'm paying out the bills, well, you know, what are they saying actually happened? Um, so they'll be showing that project scope documents, just that Matt showed you. Um, the second fiscal.
Right.
That he showed was showing that product, project as a whole.
It's got everything on that, yeah.
Right, right, not the, not that first one where it was just the seventeen million dollar, but the.
Overall.
Overall, so we'll be seeing it there too.
Alright, cool, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a note. Okay, and we talked slightly about the debt services, but that then rolls into the final, the final page is the overview. Of the entire budget. By fund. And then showing our. General fund deficit spend of two hundred thousand dollars that, like I said, I feel that is. Basically, we, because we do have restricted funds that we got, so. The pilot, the attendance pilot grant, we already got, received all those funds, so that's in restricted, and we're going to spend that on salaries this year. So that's part of that two hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
Um, that, those types of things. So. So this is the budget I present to you for.
I'll just throw out there that this is a really easy vote compared to the rest of Minnesota right now, with all of our. Neighbors that are cutting and laying people off and finding ways to find pennies. To be able to vote yes for this budget, knowing that we have money in reserves and we have money put away. Kudos to the board for. Doing really well through a really challenging time. We're, we're better off financially right now than any other district I know. You should all proud of that. So should Ms. Olver. And Ms. Backland from years before.
Yep, we need a motion at this point.
It's Quinn's turn.
Yeah, I motion too.
And it's my turn to second.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Uh, I did, I'll echo what Chris was saying. Thank you for continuing to keep us all on, on track. Um, definitely feeling that gratitude compared to other districts as we follow the news.
Yeah.
As we're heading into continuing to talk about additional building projects and. Managing our finances as well. This helps with that, that story where we can say that we're doing these projects. And we're also keeping our, just operating budget on, on track. So, it's great. Um, okay, all those in favor?
I.
I, I, those opposed, motion carries. Alrighty, eight point five is to approve the LTFM ten-year plan. Got that here in the packet as well.
So we're required in here to over stamp basically kind of a ten-year lookout for LTF funding specifically. So it's kind of just the annual. And the plan is put together by Tom and Teresa for the most part. Um, just trying to look out and the state needs to see that we've got. The use of the dollars kind of articulated out for ten years.
Right. And as we move forward in some of the referendum projects, we've talked about using some of these funds, which, you know, would maybe next year. Our ten-year plan might look a little different, you know, so it, it's kind of a work in progress, progress moving forward and. It's laid out with the hopes that, you know, sometimes you might have to be more in a planning state than a waiting state. Like right now, can look at it and say, oh, we're building, building a cash fund for building maintenance.
The two items on your list here, uh, that we were talking about. Coming back to the board and in some way, shape or form, asking for permission is the tuck pointing. Somehow that did not get into the deferred maintenance stuff that is in the bond referendum, and that was a surprise to me. Um, I don't know how they got, how that got missed. Um, and then because we took the bus maintenance garage off of it. For this coming bond referendum. That we just moved forward using LTF and funds to fix up the maintenance garage. Uh, renew the plumbing in there and the bathroom, and they get like usable. And my suggestion would be that we make a plan to do that, and then we include those in the bidding that goes out in October. So they're part of the, the scope of ICS and their oversight and the contractors, we're just funding throughout LTF. Rather than, uh, fund, if that makes sense. So, uh, that will probably come back to you somehow in the near future.
Right, so with that, we would have to, if it's over a hundred thousand dollars, we do have to submit that.
Yep.
That ask to MDE.
And, and ICS can help us do that, that very.
Right.
We often use LTFM as part of a project. So it's not new to them, but on my priority list, since we took it off of that question for the whole referendum, like. They should have a functioning toilet and the bus garage, so for sure. We'll tackle.
One other thing that wasn't on here when I, we talked about this earlier this month was tech ed lighting, that's going to happen probably.
This summer.
This summer, so July, August, so that got added in.
We're tackling that early because there's so many out right now, so we're just gonna do it.
Those were the only changes. Those were the only changes for them. And then the big huge graphs that are or charts that are in there, those are the actual documents that I send to M D, they're in there, so you see them. This is just a summary, so you can.
You can read that.
Understand what is in the big.
Impressive.
The big chart that they.
It's pretty.
Want us to submit.
It's already pretty colored, probably need to use a screen about this big in order to work.
And a lot of it is, you know, is populated from numbers they have that.
Whole stick with page one.
Six, the overview page. And I just need um a motion on that and then I will move forward to um get that all. Sent into M D P and put in place.
So I'll make a motion to approve the uh. L T. F. What's that, it's an I chart here.
LTFM.
LTFM ten year plan.
I second. Hey, further discussion? I guess I just have one quick other question for you, just in terms of like the revenue side of this. Um, how do they determine what we get for revenue?
It is based on three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil and the age of your building.
Okay.
Is.
Eight square footage.
Eight square footage, yes, sorry.
Yeah. Age square footage and then your enrollment.
Or is it capped at three eighty? I think it's capped at three eighty.
So if you have all the square footage, you get less money.
Yeah.
If you have an older building, you get more money.
So with their new additions, I don't think it should impact too greatly, because we still have so much else of our building that is.
We're increasing footprint, but that footprint is new.
Right.
So.
Do they talk, as far as that formula goes, is that ever like a topic of conversation at the legislature in terms of like?
I can tell you.
Look out ten years, you know, and it's flat, basically.
Well, the answer is absolutely, and so um I'm old enough now to remember the passage of LTFM. That was only maybe ten years ago that this revenue stream was created and. It was created because the largest twenty five school districts in the state of Minnesota have access to a funding mechanism. Like LTFM that no one else does. So. Um, when I was in Brunswick, we were remodeling buildings with this revenue stream. The other three hundred and fifteen districts in the state had no access to it. So LTFM was created and LTFM was, it it's not state money, it's it's local taxpayer money, it's our local taxpayers. Um, in our, it's one of the lines in our levy and it does go to all properties in the district, so it's like the bond referendum. Um. And so we just every year we max the levy. Uh, and capture as much as we're allowed to capture per statute, we could lower that and capture less, but that would be dumb. Um, so we capture what we. We can, and then ever since it passed, there has been a push every single legislative cycle for. Expanding the use of it, it started like super narrow and then it got a little wa- broader and a little broader. This year, the legislature approved, you can do full roof projects without any red tape, so it got expanded a little bit further. So I keep, I mean, that's always one of my talking points is. Why somebody's, because there's strings attached to it, like you can't upgrade anything, it's replaced like for like. So, okay, so that to me, that's a that's a handcuff, like sometimes. Why couldn't I get LED lighting? Because it would be, you know, that would be an upgrade. I have the same frickin' light bulb. So uh, there's little things like that that we lobby for every year in the legislature to give a little more flexibility.
Sure, okay.
And then this year there was a request to increase it. And that was denied, it didn't make it over the finish line.
Okay.
And the reason for the flatness is just the enrollment, we just, once you go out a couple of years, you just leave that flat and it's in.
Right.
I mean.
Sure.
There is, so we could maybe finite get, would change much.
You, it will change in terms of what we actually get.
Correct, but when you're estimating out ten years.
Yeah.
Five thousand dollar here and there maybe isn't.
Predictable.
Okay, alright, thanks for that explanation. Um, okay, so we got a motion and a second, um, all those in favor? I, those opposed, motion carries. Alright, eight point six is to approve the teacher development evaluation system.
I'll tee this up, Mr. Chair. Um. So I think you all have been in the know that we had a task force this year that was charged with. Re creating or creating a teacher of development and evaluation system or framework. Uh, and that was driven by two reasons, one, um. The framework that's been used in Cook County schools for the last decade or more is based upon the research of a lady named Charlotte Danielson. Um, published her work probably thirty years ago, I've used that framework in other districts. But um, I believe that the Marzano framework, which is the framework tied to the high reliability school system and all of that, the art science of teaching. Is better, uh, and we've been doing a lot of professional development around that work over the last three, four years, um. And so there was some synergy around, hey, let's redo this, let's get this aligned with all the rest of the work that we're doing in the district. And then we got a kick in the pants to do it when the legislature. Um, approved some new requirements that include weaving in cultural competency elements. Uh, and alignment to what they called the um. In the document. The standards of effective practice. Looking at page two of the the document, the standard of effective practice. So by fall of next year, we have to be using a teacher evaluation system that is aligned to the standards of effective practice and. Weaves in culturally responsive instructional practices. And so we set up, we put a task force together, we huddle up in the beginning of the year, we did the training and we convened about. Seven times, six times where we did a full day sub. And we just dove into the work, and if you read through the document um on page two there, you'll get a little background that talks about how. We looked at the um new art and science of teaching, that's the Marzano work. Uh, we looked at the culturally responsive teaching, a reflection guide by New America, which was given to us by M D. And the Pelsby published standards of effective practice and we wove it all together, uh, we. We landed on a book. Um, by Marzano Work and some others called Improving Teacher Development and Evaluation. Uh, that basically is the framework for this rubric. Uh, and so our team feels like we've probably done. The best work in the state of Minnesota on this charge, I'm so proud of our teachers, because we didn't. We didn't take the shortcut, we we went all the way right into the belly of the beast and we landed on a book that real, if you read the. Uh, what page am I on? Page two on the bottom, there's like a generic scale. So when a principal's doing an observation, you're going in there and. You get descriptors under each element and then a two, which would be developing, says the teacher's engaged in the work. And without errors. And then the difference from a two to a three is the teacher's doing the work, but in a three. The vast majority of the kids are actually doing the right thing. So it's about what are the kids doing, what are the, what are the student minds engaged in? And you can see that for the first ten performance areas. Um, and we've linked them to the new art and science of teaching elements, we've put culturally responsive look fours for each performance area. Uh, and under the title of each performance area, the S E P and then some. Numbers and letters, that's a crosswalk to the M D E published standards of effective practice. And we went that far because we have Q comp and we know we're gonna have to submit it to the state and then they're gonna ask for that crosswalk at some point. Um, so our teachers, um. I think in many districts across the state of Minnesota, the weaving in of the culturally responsive practices is being done really poorly and very. Lipstick on a pig kind of, and our teachers said, no, we want to do it right, and so they wove that into each of the performance areas. Scroll down, you'll see that in the upper right hand corner of each. Area culturally responsive look fours. And then the reflection questions underneath the bottom of each performance area, that is for the coach and the principal for that post observation conference. Those are good thinking questions to provoke. Conversation and growth. And then our teachers decided that. With the ten performance areas. They still needed a performance area eleven specifically to call out culturally responsive teaching. And we had a lot of hand wringing over how to craft language that actually puts meat to that. And we brought Margaret Newton into that conversation a little bit to talk to us from an indigenous perspective and how that might look. Um. And it was, it was hard.
It's hard stuff.
It's kind of creating stuff that none of us have ever created before. Um. And then the last performance area, number twelve, is that big bucket of professionalism, are you on time to work every day? Are you participating in professional development? Are you doing your job? Are you, you know, being kind to your colleagues, those kinds of things? So it's the ten areas based upon Marzano's art and science of teaching. Then eleven is culturally responsive teaching, twelve is professionalism. And. What's not been done here in the past. Hasn't been in compliance with statute. Statute language says that uh thirty five percent of teacher evaluation needs to be driven by student achievement. And so you can see on the tenth page, we've got a little bit of a, well, what's your measure of student growth? This is gonna be a big leap. This year and it's gonna be hard because it's. It's so different from a third grade teacher to a. Buy ed teacher at high school level, like what's your measure of growth?
Yeah.
Um, so we're gonna take our first stab this year at. Having the teachers help define what is your data set for student achievement growth. And we're gonna allow for a lot of differentiation on that just because of the complexity of the the diversity of our staff. But then they have to do a mathematical calculation, so the scoring of from the twelve areas above. Times point six five, then the scoring of student achievement times point three five, add it all up, put a number to it, that's what Josh is required to do by law. Not our two instructional coaches, they don't have to do. Because there's more about growth and development, not about even actual evaluation. Um, so. I guess the last page is there, twelve is just kind of an outline of the timeline in a year, how it works. If you're a non-tenured teacher, you're observed three times, or if you're one third, in the one third of tenure teachers, you you do that. You know, every three years, you do the evaluation in there. Um, the last sheet is the pre-observation form that's below and all that's actually electronic in our uh Ewok system. So I just want to publicly uh commend uh the teachers that were on that task force, uh they were our two instructional coaches, Jen's Jacobson and Lacy Smith. And then Autumn Hood uh was on that from our um elementary school, super fun to work with Autumn on this project. Uh, Melanie Olson from the middle school and Chad Dennis from the high school and uh. Just really, really good work. Really good work, we can take this thing on the road and celebrate uh if we want to, because it's that good.
Maybe we could use a fundraiser.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, and they're proud of it too, Chad's like, yeah, I'm really proud of this, it was really good work, so.
Nice.
Kudos to them.
And then.
It's amazing.
It was amazing.
I should also add that the union did do a vote and this passed, um overwhelming.
I I think it's fascinating because um. You know, it's, it really kind of exposes them a lot of ways to to growth and criticism and evaluation and. You know, it's.
Courageous.
It is, it's very courageous. To to be a part of that, um. I think a lot of people just like wanna like la 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 la, I just want to do my job however I want to do it.
Right.
And uh, so that's a lot. It's great.
And then I'm assuming kind of looking forward, obviously, this was a heavy lift to kind of craft this plan, but then it's kind of like. The accountability piece and like the elbow room to have the time to do all the things and make it happen is. I'm sure just another challenge as you look forward to the like scheduling and just the logistical.
To do the observations.
Yeah, and just like kind of executing on this, right?
Well, the 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 requirements are already there, I mean, Josh did all the evaluations this year. Um. Um. So that's not bigger per se, it's just deeper and it's more aligned, because now the the. Growth goals teacher set in the fall for themselves, the Q comp goals, the. Observations and the work they do in their collaborative teams, it's all aligned in the same frame, it's high reliability schools and the art and science of teaching. Whereas before it was fragmented and it just. They didn't, they didn't line up. Um, so I think, I think the lift is gonna be in the fall, we are gonna have to spend some of teacher workshop and then our first month and a half of. C T meetings really dive deep into it. To help everyone rattle head around it, you know, what are you actually looking for when you come in and observe me?
Yeah.
You know, really getting clarity around that. But clarity is how you get excellence, right? Um, clarity of expectation, so. Yeah, proud of our teachers, there's a lot of fun to work with them on this. This effort.
Awesome. Alright, so we need a motion to approve this.
Yeah, I wish him to approve the teacher development education system.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Uh, just a note that um it's it's fluid, we may come back together next winter and say, you know, we need to make a couple tweaks.
Sure, when you start using it. We might find that.
Yeah, of course, and so we might bring it back again a year from now with a couple tweaks or something like that.
Great. Alright, all those in favor?
I.
I, those opposed, motion carries. Alright, eight point seven is to approve the ARC twenty five twenty six contract. Um, we've got the contract here in the packet and a summary. Services and costs and some historical financial data.
So uh, for Quinn's sake, ARC is the consortium that we are a part of for our H R payroll system. And for our student information system, those are the two big buckets they support. Um, they are a lifeline for any small district to not be in a consortium is crazy, because. Um, that's who you fall back on for all of your technical needs for H R payroll and for student information. They support us, um, they help fill in like in the transition from Lori to Parisa with training and development. Um. Do they run our payroll anymore? I used to.
They, I prepare it, they, they do the final. Yeah.
Back in the day, they wrote the checks.
Like they, yes, they send the A C H file.
File.
From the bank to our bank. That that part of the.
Yeah.
And they can fill in like if you had a gap, like if you had a a vacancy in your business manager role, like they could.
Pump.
They could fulfill that for you, help help sort that out.
That's where Lori Backland went. She's working for them, filling in for Northland.
Yep. Um, okay, and then we just have to approve this every year, every year, yeah, contract, yeah, okay.
I can take a motion to approve that.
I'll second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I.
I, those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, eight point eight uh is to accept the donation slate for June. Twenty twenty five here in the packet, got.
What's going on?
A number of donations.
When I opened that, I was like.
Yeah, well, the white K one and then the three, I mean, the Ed Foundation ones, those are big.
Those are all big. But the the small, the small ones met, you know, met as well. You know, really supporting the kids in every way, so.
Mm hmm. Yeah, this is. Hundred and fifteen thousand dollars or so. Amazing. Um, great, yeah, and then we just need a a motion to approve it, to accept them.
I'll second that motion with appreciation to all the donors.
Further discussion? Yes, a resounding thank you to everybody supporting the district. In a big way. Um, okay, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I, those opposed? Resolution is adopted. Nine point O is personnel, nine point one is our new hire slate for June.
Let me make a comment, Mr. Chair, I, we, I'm writing my newsletter for the fall and. I was listing new staff. We have ten licensed staff. Joining our team for next fall, I I had to count it three times, I didn't believe it was ten. And so five are replacements for people that have left and we've hired all credentialed and licensed hires. And then. Last year, we hired an O T for this fall. We just hired on Friday a speech language pathologist after contracting with Jane Wolf for two days a week. These are positions that have been open for as long as I've been here, they've been open for over five years. And now we're replacing virtual services with real bodies, real people. And uh if Mabel actually gets a place to live and moves here and starts working here, it'll be the first time since I've been here that we're not using virtual services. Our special ed team will be a complete team. And then the additional point six nurse position is because we've been, we had this revenue stream for two. And then the additional point six nurse position is because we've been, we've had this revenue stream for two years that we've not been able to tap, cuz we didn't have a licensed. Person, and Allison was here before, she's coming back to us.
Awesome.
As a licensed LSN, yeah, I've heard that a lot, and, uh, um. I'm just ecstatic, I, I can't believe that, uh, finally we're not tapping virtual services. So, not gonna worry if people gets housing, um.
There's, I mean, there's housing around now, I mean, there's apartments and stuff, I mean, even if it's where you could.
Yep.
It's not like. You can land.
You can land.
Somewhere till you can figure something else out.
Yeah, so it's a good day to be a Viking, and, um, I just can't say that enough. All teaching positions will officially be filled.
Yeah, yeah, nice work, that was amazing.
I will make a motion to accept the new hires, resignation on leave of absences, only new hires involved.
I'll second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Alright, state a motion to adjourn. Quinn's.
Oh, it's your.
Quinn's turn. Your adjournment said thirty-four.
Officially, it's not gonna officially announce, but officially, um, Kristen, except.
Accepted?
Amazing.